Is Daisy on the phone?
Yes, she is.
Okay.
Well, I don't know if she's on the -- Daisy, can you?
See you guys.
Okay, I just unmuted you. Then unmute everybody. I'll remember. Okay. Okay, we're going to get started. The first thing we have, let me pull up the for those of you who were at the meeting last week. I'm going to pull up the minutes. Two weeks ago, I'm sorry.
There's Daisy.
Okay, so here are the draft of the minutes from last meeting. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept them?
So moved.
Second.
Any additions or corrections or changes? Okay. If there are none, can I have a motion to approve? I mean, a vote?
Hi.
Hi. No oppose. Okay, it passes. Okay, next we have, actually, I'm going to take this out of order. I want to do the change event. We did not hear back from Barry earlier, so there's one change event. Jeff, do you want to talk about this change event number 68 for the conflict of the mezzanine footings?
Yeah. So in the old garage bay area, which is going to become the facilities workshop, they called for us to take down a masonry wall and support the mezzanine slab with structural steel. And in doing that, we had to saw cut the concrete and install some three by three footings that would hold the steel columns to support the mezzanine. Upon demolition of the floor, we found out that underneath the floor was a foundation wall that was supporting the masonry wall up above. And it conflicted with the isolated footings. So an RFI was generated and the solution, most cost economical solution would be to just saw cut and demo that portion of the existing foundation wall and just place the isolated footing down on and place the isolated footing as it was calling for in the contract documents. So the price generated here is for basically just demoing the existing foundation wall that existed in four different locations.
Okay, and may have, anybody want to make a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? On favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. I got somebody else here, hold on. Okay, who has somebody? Hi, who's this?
Abe.
Abe, there you are. Okay, I'm going to put your name so we'll know where you are. Hold on. Are you watching us as well, Abe?
No, not yet.
Okay.
I'm just on the phone.
Okay. So we just finished the approving the change event and now we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the presentation of the budget and additional value engineering recommendations. Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Rick.
Are you sharing that form, Nancy?
I will. Hold on, I want to make sure I can get Abe in. Okay. And Rick, as you go through it, for people who might be on the phone, if you could pretend that you see this.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
Actually, I can't. I don't know how to scroll this up, anyway.
Oh, do you mean me? I can do that.
Okay, so we can get a little more of it on the screen or Yes, well, as everyone knows, the reason, main reason for this special meeting was just to, you know, we're running thin on contingency funds. And we're just looking, you know, we've got the team together and we're looking into ways of reducing scope to take it out of the, you know, the cost of the project as well as, you know, to determine what may or may not be additional costs. Okay, so we can come out with this project, with a complete project and and within budget. So as Nancy had sent out yesterday in regard to the balance that's left in the change event, I'm sorry, the change order log for the contingency is $12,862. Okay, what we're looking at potential, when I say potential, because we, some of these are estimates and some are projections. And so, you know, we're just trying to to put a gauge here on how much money we're going to need to finish the project. So that's what we have here as projected additional costs. You can see 6,000 for CCRs. We have a number of change events, small change events that we don't have dollar figures to that just came up within the past week or so, Jeff, right?
Yep.
And one of those is actually a credit and that is, that is included in that $27,000. Jeff has put a line in there for possible, possible extended GCs. We have nothing on that. And we're still working up based on the June 5th schedule, so that has yet to be determined. And also just, you know, putting in an allowance of a potential for any other costs that may come up to the end of the project. Okay, so if we add all that up, we're looking at $63,000 of addition, of cost till the end of the project. Okay, if we back out that $12,862 that we have in contingency, we show a shortfall of about $50,000. Okay, so we're looking at that cost savings, trying to make that up. All right, there's one, one little bit, you'll see number five here, and if you don't, it's CE number 21, which is change event 21. And it's based on the stair that's been on the change event log with a value, savings value of $8,052. Okay, we've gotten to a point with the building department where we think that's going to, you know, come in our favor. So we're hopeful, but we're not yet counting on it. So at this point, we have, we have that taken out. You know, so we're not counting on it in the $12,862. But if we, you know, do grant it our way, then yeah, that'll be a bonus because of it. So some of the things we did in trying to determine, you know, we're just trying to throw everything out there, you know, what are potential cost savings, you know, depending on whether it's, you know, a good idea, a bad idea, or, you know, just trying to throw everything against the wall and see what sticks. Basically, so some of the things, and I do have a couple that I wanted to add on here that I, we did leave off. But one was the fine grade. Okay, so fine grade and seed. We, you know, looked at possibly having the DPW do that. The value savings there would be $13,325. Okay, so, you know, that's, that's a potential. We'll discuss, you know, whether it's good or bad a little bit later. Remove painting scope from one of the maintenance garages. Now, I have a value there of $5,000. When we finally got the pricing back from PDS, it actually was $6,000, but you know, it's a little bit of $1,000 difference there. And then the big one here is removing the fencing that's in the project, which is basically gates. So the only areas that would be fenced would be the impound lot and around the trash pad. Okay, so that would still remain. Everything else would come out. That's a, that's a large savings of $60,000. Okay. Also, we talked about, I think the last meeting as well, the possibility of only putting a binder coat down on the balance of the project where we need paving. And we'll discuss that in a little bit. Two items that aren't on here that were cost savings. One, we also talked about abandoning the fuel tanks. If that was an option as well as it's not a cost savings for the project, but, you know, when I say that, it is a cost savings, but it's not a savings out of the initial funds. But we're, you know, being as we didn't have, you know, moving dollars in the budget, either way, we had 17, a little over $17,000 in phase one. The DPW would be, you know, is willing to and prefer, actually in the maintenance area, I think, to move themselves back in. Okay, so there would be, there would be a savings there, so we wouldn't have an additional charge. Okay, so what we came up with, if we look at the recommendations down below, the two that aren't on here, as far as the abandoning the fuel tanks, Weston and Sampson and John, correct me if I'm wrong, but, and I agree that, you know, this is something that unless it's very special conditions, you know, the rules are pretty much that, you know, the underground tanks have to come out. They used to be, you can fill them and leave them in place. But over the last, you know, 10 years, you know, everything's been coming out of the ground. So, so we're not recommending that. And then you can see the going down the list here as far as the fine grading. That would be something that we we offered out to the DPW, but at this point, Dan, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that, you know, staffing being a little thin and everything running around and trying to coordinate it with construction just doesn't seem to be, you know, a real viable option. There is a possibility that if we need it, there might be some time. And Jeff Island, I don't know if you have a timeframe on that, but, you know, when that, you know, if we had to pull that 13,000 for one reason or another, that we could. But that one, you know, wouldn't be dead yet, but something that could happen, but we prefer not to. Okay. As far as the painting credit, looking at a safety issue that the painting in there really needs to be, to be done as far as a safety issue. Being bright and working on the because the paint will add brightness to the room and we'll need to, you know, help out the folks working in there. Also, in moving down to the paving, that, you know, this would probably run into some warranty issues. And based on the issues we're currently having, which we had coring done and we have a remediation suggestion in place as of this week, that we didn't feel that would be in the project's best interest and really wouldn't, you know, be a benefit to the DPW just to have the binding code. But the one big one as far as removing the fencing for $60,000, you know, we all feel is a very viable option. And, you know, this would, if we did not accept any of the others and you know, brought this into being, Nancy, if you can bring that up a little bit further. I believe as it is with the $12,862 in contingency and the $60,000 based on our projected expenses, we're looking at having an excess, if you want to call it that, you know, then anything could happen, of $9,862. And if we do get that that stair granted to be left in, then that would move back up to $17,914. So, I mean, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. I think the one thing that we're looking at as far as, you know, cost savings for the project, take out of the project to save money, would be the fencing. Well, kind of throw it out there and open it up for discussion.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Yes, the fencing, is this, this is fencing inside of the, inside of the lot? Or is this a fencing around the lot?
It would be predominantly gates. Okay, there's two gates as well as some, there is some fencing that goes around the lot. So what would be left would be just what's around the impound lot as well as what's around the trash compactor.
Okay. And the impound lot is, where is that on the site?
It's basically, it's in front, it's almost where the trailer is currently, if you've been on site. It's like right behind the trailer, just off to the, you know, offset, so against the, against the woods back there.
Okay, that's over toward, when you're coming in, that's over toward the left?
Correct.
Is that something that needs, like any kind of OSHA or regulations to be done later?
As far as what, the two fence around the DPW? Is that the question?
Yes.
I don't believe, and John, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe there's any regulation that we need to, to have that. It is, you know, it adds a level of security. But we do need to have it around the impound lot because of, you know, chain of custody and things like that for evidence.
And the fencing did not enclose the perimeter of the DPW site. It only prohibited vehicular traffic from going to around the back of the building. So it was a desire of the DPW during design to have that for added security, but it didn't prevent anyone from entering the back of the site on foot, just by vehicle.
So if we didn't put it in now, is it possible they could add it later?
Certainly. It's possible, yes.
And there is conduit under, already installed underneath to do the electronic controls if, if it's on later date. There's a desire to put that in.
Any other questions or comments on that? If not, Nancy, I don't know where we go from here on that.
Well, I just wanted to say we did meet as a, as a team yesterday to discuss these. And I will reiterate what Rick said, that this really was a consensus that we come to you with the recommendation. Except the $60,000 value engineering. And that would get us to a point with all of the additional costs that we estimate where there hopefully would be a little bit of a cushion at the end to finish the project or to address any other unforeseen conditions that we may not have estimated for. So it's the team's recommendation that the building committee accept this.
And Dan and Chris, if you have any, any comments on that, I mean, we did, we did vet this with the DPW. They were a large part of the suggestions as well as the solution. So if you guys have any comments on that.
Yeah, this is Dan. You know, we did review it in detail and it is the, really the only remaining item that has any real value associated with it that doesn't cause impacts to other trades. You know, obviously, security of the site was a goal. But we would be looking to pursue the gates to be installed at a later date, either as a capital project in the future or potentially re reutilizing operational money in future fiscal years. But like John said, the gates only prevented vehicular access to the site. If the project were built according to plan, personnel could still just go around the fences. The impound lot, because of evidence and like Rick said, chain of title, I don't think that's an option. That fence needs to be there to secure vehicles. The dumpster, they were checked, some, I don't know, John, if you ever did check with Jose. But I do believe zoning, there's the possibility they require fencing around the dumpster as part of the zoning permit. And it's not all that much fencing to speak of. The real money is in the gates. And it really is the only item that was left that we could really realize any substantial savings from.
Are there other questions people have?
I'm just wanting to know if the town council already knows the situation we're in with the budget and what considering that they wouldn't consider an increase to the project?
The council, I have not updated them because we did not have the monthly meeting with administration and education. However, I will say, although I know she's otherwise engaged, the mayor is the liaison to this committee and so she receives the documents that were sent out. So officially, the council has not been notified. If you were looking, I believe the building committee's charge would require you to ask them for additional money if you get to the point where there's insufficient funds in the current budget. I also would just put a caveat on that. Almost all of the town's capital improvement requests for next year are not going to be funded in next year's budget as a result of projection of lower revenues resulting from the coronavirus pandemic. So I mean, certainly, if that's something you want to do, I mean, I had heard from this building committee in the past that you were not really did not want to go down that path. If that's changed, then we can certainly pursue that. So would you like us to go forward with removing the fencing as recommended by the group?
So Nancy, hidden things will get between now and the projected completion date in June? And there's not going to be any change events? Is there any, is the team? I know you can't be 100% certain, but are you 100% certain that we're not going to have any surprises? Which will, as Gail said, which will force us to go back to the town? Based upon your professional opinion or your professional experience, is there anything hidden things we need to be concerned with?
I think I'm going to bring back up Rick's summary. Rick did, Rick and actually John, Jeff Neeland had calculated some anticipated expenditures, which included a couple of change requests that are outstanding and then plugged in some numbers. So they were estimating that between now and June that there would be an additional $63,000 of changes that would add money to the project. So if you see $3,000 that they think might come and then take a credit for the $8,000 stairwell as well as the staircase, as well as the $60,000 in fencing, that would leave a slight surplus anywhere from about $18,000. I'll pull up that.
Yeah, I saw that. Outside of this proposal, is there anything else you think is going to come up that will, that will require additional change orders? That's my question.
So, so the biggest unknown left on the job is pulling out those gas tanks. We've carried money to deal with polluted soil, if there is any, $10,000, which is a fair amount of change to deal with stuff like that. So is there any guarantees? No. Is that if you pull those tanks out and they've been leaking and there's a big problem, well, yeah, you're going to go over.
You know, no matter, no matter what we do, we gotta have the facts certain, because if we think that we may have a problem, well, we can't, we're at a point where we got to know that we aren't going to have a problem.
Jeff, when are those tanks scheduled to be, come out?
Right when we turn the other ones on, so it's going to be towards the end of May.
Okay.
So in, Jeff Alberti, I see you're online, Jeff.
Jeff Alberti, unmute yourself.
Yes.
Yeah, so I know you had conversations with John Lawler in the beginning about those tanks and they felt confident that you know, there was no leakage in there, I guess, right? Or am I?
Yeah, we have, we have no reason to believe that they were leaking. We weren't advised of any lost inventory. We weren't advised of any olfactory evidence of leakage. Certainly, I can't say for 100% sure that we're not going to find anything, but those, those things were discussed during the process and we're not aware of any leakage.
You're really not going to know until you actually pull the tanks out, right?
That's correct.
That's, that's the real deal, the tanks, underground tanks. You never know until you pull them out.
Right, so in understanding that we built, you know, $10,000 into an allowance to deal with, you know, polluted soil if it came about. And when we did that, it was felt that it was a reasonable number and and it would be appropriate if some problem came about. So I mean, that's when you're doing this, I guess that's the best you can do.
Well, we know we have to take the tanks out, so let's, let's get about taking them out. And so we don't have no condemnation. Let's get them out.
And Nancy, this is Dan. Just correct me if I'm wrong, if, if we make a decision not to do the fence now and at the end of the project, we end up with sufficient funds to do the fencing, we can still use project money and go ahead and do that even if it's after the completion date, correct?
Yes, that's correct, Anne. You're correct.
Okay.
So we can table that issue for maybe the next meeting or the meeting after. Or we can move ahead on accepting it and then add it back in too.
Let's move ahead on accepting it and put it back in.
I agree with that.
Okay.
I concur with that.
All right, so can I have a motion to accept the recommendation to move forward with the value engineering of $60,000 estimate?
Don't move.
Second. Any other questions or comments? Okay, can I have all in favor?
Hi.
Be opposed?
Hi.
So we may have some of our members.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Okay, so I think that's it. Our next meeting is on Thursday, May 14. Assuming we're still not open, we'll be doing this via Zoom again. And is there any other business that anyone wants to bring up? Motion to
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, thank you so much, everyone. Stay safe.
Stay healthy.
Bye bye. All right.
Bye bye.
Take care. All right, bye bye.